Slavje Svezu Kristo. Vjerojatno se vam pripada 6. studij u bibiji knjizi. Učinili smo prvi period od prethodnog sveta, također prvi period historije o slavstvu, koji se zove prethodni svet. I zapravo započeli smo razmijenom u zadnji dan. Continuiramo danas slijed prethodnog perioda u historiji slavstva, periodu patriarchov i formaciji natočnika Izraše. U pripreme za danas, trebali biste čitati od genesija, čl. 12 do 22. Ako niste, pokušajte to čitići nakon što se poslači. I u pripreme za nastupljajuću večeru, moramo čitati čl. 23 do 36. Dakle, za danas su čl. 12 do 22, a nakon toga će se poslati čl. 23 do 36 od genesija. Pocijekajmo. Na imenu Oca, Dana i Svečeg, a Svečeg, Amen. Svjetliška, advokat, Svetiška Zaprav, koji su svakako postojali i napravljaju sve. Trezorak zahvalstvenja, zahvalnik života. Idite i postojajte u nas. Slijediti nas od svega što nas izvodi. A, Božan, opet naredite naše sjene. Pronaška St. John Kristus prije čitanja ili slušanja slova Božije. O Božem Kristu Svečemu, otevri oči mojima slobodima, da možem sjeti slovo Božje, razumjeti i raditi svoju želju. Foram sam u zemlju. Ne presebeš svoje pokazivanje od me, ali otevri oči, da možem vidjeti ljepote svog zakona. Poskrijeća mi se nezamislene i skrivene stvari svog mowila. Na tebe setujem oči, o Božem. Da će tebe osvjetljivati moja um, i razumijevanje sa svjetlosti svog poznatca. Ne samo da se zahvaljavate tama stvari koje su napisane, ampak da je to raditi. Da, čitajući život i reči svetovima, ne možem žrtviti, ampak da će to biti usporedbu za moju upravljanost, osvjetljanost i santifikaciju za slavstvu moje sjene i upravljanost života nekada. Fora ste osvjetljenici tih koji su u mraku, i od tebe dolazi svaka dobra radina i svaki zahvalnik. Amen. Dobro, tako da, samo prije što nastavimo, malo pogledajmo. Nastavio sam, da prvi period u historiji slavstva se zove prethodni svet. I zove se prethodni svet, jer nismo mogli razumjeti vrijeme, kada je počelo i koliko je bio. I u tom primerskim vrijeme, prethodnog sveta, je objasnjen u genesiji, čl. 1 do 11. Dakle, to je vrijeme od genesija, čl. 1 do 11. Mi imamo opis prethodnog sveta, prvi period u historiji slavstva. I tu smo prošli mnogo stvari koje nam daju početke. Imali smo prvi storičak stvaranja, imali smo drugi storičak stvaranja. Imali smo cijelu storičku originalne žrtve i spadu u paradis. Potom je storička druga žrtva. Cain vraća brata Abelu. Potom su dva genealogija, koje nam objasnili dva različita načine. Tih koji se područuju svojim besedom Božijeg, bratima Božijeg, i tih koji se područuju svojim željama i uključivanjima, bratima ljudi.
So when you look at Canaan, or Palestine, or the Holy Land, like right in the middle, you'll see this mountainous ridge. And so on one side, you have it coming down to the Mediterranean, and on the other side, it's coming down to the Jordan Valley. And so when he comes into Canaan, the road, one of the trade routes come along the ridge. So you're traveling down the ridge. And there are several important cities there. So the first city that he hits is called Shechem. And that would be in what we understand to be what Samaria would be later on Samaria. So Shechem, it would be north of Jerusalem. And Shechem was one of the oldest cities in Canaan. And it was actually not on the ridge. You had to come down from the ridge into a valley between two mounts, Mount Ebal and Mount Geresim. And it was a major city with walls, protected by walls, and it controlled that fertile valley there. And it was a place where the road would go through, and it controlled the trade route there. Now, close to that is what you'll see in the Scriptures called the Oak of Morah, which was a sacred tree and sacred place. So Canaan looked a lot different than what you would see today in the Holy Land. There were many forests of beautiful trees, and especially oak trees. And you know how oak trees, I mean, they can be really old, right? So beautiful oak, forests of oak trees. And so those oak trees, especially the oldest ones, and these beautiful forests of oak trees were considered to be sacred places, holy places, where God would often speak and places of worship. So he comes to Shechem, and he comes to the Oak of Morah and stays there for a while. Now, when he comes to that place of the Oak of Morah, what does he do? He builds an altar. And he calls upon the name of the Lord. What it means, he offers a sacrifice, and he worships God in praise and thanksgiving for getting him so far. Right? Now, after that, he moves down south, so Shechem. The next major city is called Bethel, which means House of God. And right next to Bethel is a small city just east of it called Ai. And so he settles just outside of Bethel, between Bethel and Ai. He builds another altar there and worships the Lord. And then he journeys down further, past Salem, which will be eventually Jerusalem. Jeru-salem, so Salem. And he will pass that and go further down into the wilderness of the Negev, which is down below the bottom part. And that place would be kind of conducive to nomadic living and sheep herding and so forth. So those are kind of the major cities that you'll hear about when you read the Scriptures. Shechem, along that ridge, the first one. Bethel, it's also called Luz, just below that, at the intersection of main routes. Salem, which eventually will be named Jerusalem. Further down is Hebron. Hebron. And then further on is Bershiba. And there are three other cities that are Canaanite cities that you'll hear in the Scriptures, is Megiddo. So it's about 20 miles southeast of what today is Haifa. So it's closer to the coast. And you have Lashish, way down at the bottom, about 15 miles west of Hebron. And Girar, which is also in Negev. So you don't have to memorize these names. But it's nice to have a map and have some kind of awareness because when you read the story and he moves here or there, he goes there, then you have an idea of where the important figures or characters in the Scriptures, where they are going. So here he is. He's in the land of Canaan. He did what the Lord told him. And then all of a sudden, a problem arises. A famine hits the land. So what do you do? Abraham's faith is tested. What is he gonna do? Is he gonna stay there? Is he gonna trust that the Lord will provide? That the Lord will follow through? Stay in that land? He'll inherit that land? God will provide the descendants and the blessing? Or does he have to take matters into his own hands? And so you see in the Scriptures, there's no prayer. Or maybe he prayed but didn't get an answer. But there's no clear direction that God wants him to move out of the land of Canaan. And this is where Abram is first, you could say, failure because he decides on his own with Sarai to leave the land and to move to Egypt, to travel to Egypt in the search of food. So the famine was less severe in Egypt. Okay? So he leaves without God's explicit permission. And then what does he do in Egypt? He's afraid that the king's gonna take his wife. His wife is beautiful. Okay? And so he lies. Well, he's afraid they're gonna take his wife, and then they're gonna have him killed. And so in order to save his own life, he kind of only says a half-truth. Sarah was his half-sister. And back then, you could marry your half-sister at that time. It's not until the law comes in, which forbids to marry a close relative. And so he says that Sarah is his sister. And so the king takes Sarah into his harem as his wife, thinking that she is not bound to a man. And what happens to his household? Everybody breaks out in some kind of plague or sickness. And so the king kind of puts one and two together. And he calls Abram. He says, "What did you do? I took Sarah, and all I'm having is problems in my household." And so Abram then tells the truth, that it's also, she's also his wife. And so then the king doesn't want anything to do with her. So he lets her go. Go back to your husband. And everything restores back to normal in his household. So then Sarah and Abram return back to Canaan. So in some way, they failed. They failed to listen to the Lord. They acted kind of in haste. And then by lying, got into trouble. Not really lying, but telling half-truths, kind of being dishonest, got into trouble. But you see how God is merciful, and he still helps them. He gets Abram and Sarah out of trouble, and then returns them safely back to Canaan, to the land that he has promised to them. And so kind of the faith lesson for us there is that very often, we need to wait upon the Lord. And those inspirations will come, God's will. He'll speak to us in one way or another, through the Scriptures, or through good counsel, or through our heart, or really deep inspirations that are associated with peace. And then when we know clearly to follow his word. And so important, how important it is to trust in the Lord, that in the most difficult situations, he is good and he will provide. God provides. So in chapter 13, verses 1 to 7, we have the return of Abram to the Negev. That's the south part of Canaan. And he settles there. And the Scriptures tell us that he prospers. He becomes a very rich man with lots of cattle, silver, and gold. He decides then to move further north, back to Bethel. But Lot is getting rich too, along with him. And the land there can't support all the flocks and the herds owed by Abram and Lot. And so what you're getting is strife between the herdsmen, between Lot's herdsmen and Abram's herdsmen. They're kind of fighting for the best areas where they can feed their flock and water them. And so then Abram says to Lot, "Let there be no strife between you and me, and between your herdsmen and my herdsmen, for we're kinsmen, we're family. So we shouldn't be infighting. Let's resolve this." And so Abram, what a generous man. He proposes to Lot, "Why don't we go our separate ways? But Lot, I'll give you first choice. Okay, we're up on the top of the mountain here. So you're on the mountain ridge of Bethel. So you got a good view. In every direction, you got a wonderful, beautiful view." He says, "Lot, you pick which part you want. You can have first choice." And so Lot looks around, and you're looking at that mountain ridge. And where does he look? He looks to the Jordan Valley, which is lush. It's like a garden. You can say it's like a Garden of Eden. And he's looking towards what today is the Dead Sea, and there's Sodom and Gomorrah and Zohar. And he says, "I'll choose that part." Okay? But you see a little bit of his avarice and his greed. Remember that one of the consequences of the sin was that lust of the eyes, to have, to own. And so he's looking all of that, and he's thinking, "This is gonna make me rich." But he compromises. Because the people in that land are corrupt. There's all kinds of sexual immorality happening there. And so he's going to compromise his family. So yes, he'll become rich. In that area, he'll prosper in that area. He's already prospered, but he wants more. And he loses in the process his family. And that's a lesson for all of us too. Because sometimes, you know, we, in our kind of desire to have wealth and possessions, can focus all our energies in acquiring that wealth and possessions in order to become wealthy. And the price that's paid for that is that we lose our children. So we don't look after making sure that they are brought up in the faith, that they're raised properly. That becomes secondary. And so we gain one thing, but may lose something else. At the end of the story, what we see is Abram, you know, what a wonderful man. So he's a man of faith, deep faith. He's also a peacemaker. Very generous, extremely generous. So I think he recognizes how God is generous to him. And he then is in turn very generous to anyone he meets and really genuinely concerned about others. So, you know, Abram kind of then looks around. He says, "Well, I'll take what's left over." And God's pleased with his generosity. God's pleased with him. And it's at that moment that God appears to him in a vision and renews his promise. And it's verses, chapter 13, verses 14 to 18. So we have there 14 to 18. I'll just read it. So God's pleased. Abram was so generous. And he says to him, "Lift up your eyes and look from the place where you are. Look to the north." Because remember, you can just imagine Abram standing on that mountain ridge, and he can see, he's got a beautiful view of everything, right? "Look northwards, and southwards, and eastwards, and westwards. For all the land which you see, I will give to you and your descendants forever." In other words, Lot will have that land only temporarily. But everything you see, north, south, east, and west, it will eventually become yours. So it'll belong to your descendants. "And I will make your descendants as the dust of the earth, so that if one can count the dust of the earth, your descendants also can be counted. Arise, walk through the length and the breadth of the land, for I will give it to you." So Abram moved his tent and came and dwelt by the Oaks of Mamre, which are at Hebron. So again, that sacred grove of oak trees near the city of Hebron. And there he built an altar to the Lord. I think just one thing to note here is that that land where Abram decides to live is under the reign and authority of the King of Salem. And we're gonna meet him soon. His name is Melhisadek. He's both the king and the priest for that city of Canaan and its surrounding areas. And he is a man who worships the God Most High, the same God who is speaking to Abram. So Abram has consciously chosen to live under the authority of a king who acknowledges his God. Whereas Lot has gone to an area where the kings no longer acknowledge the Lord God Most High and follow other gods that are base and associated with immorality. In chapter 14, verses 1 to 16, we have an episode where an alliance of four kings attack five kings of Canaan. So again, Canaan wasn't kind of an organized sort of one kingship where there's one king. Canaan at that time, every city had its own king and surrounding areas. And all the kings kind of worked together to protect the land. Okay? So five of the kings of Canaan, the kings of Sodom, Gomorrah, and Adman, Zebulun, and Zohar, had been conquered, and they were vassals of these kings in the north, paying tribute. Well, they just simply stopped paying the tribute, the taxes. And so these kings in the north form an alliance, so somewhere like in Syria. And now they're going to attack and again conquer to make them vassals once again. So these four kings attack the five kings of Canaan, the kings of Sodom, Gomorrah, Adman, Zabim, and Zohar. Sodom and Gomorrah are conquered. The enemies take all the goods and provisions. Lot loses everything, all his possessions. And his people are now taken as slaves, along with Lot. So this whole family, everyone is taken into as slaves. And so they're returning home. They're going north. Well, news reaches Abram. And in his family clan, he's got about 318 men that are able to fight. And so he takes 318 of his men and pursues the victorious kings all the way to Hoba, north of Damascus. He catches up, and he overcomes them, conquers them, releases all the captives, takes everything that was stolen away from them, frees Lot, and then returns home. Now, as he's returning home, he's going by the city of Salem, which is gonna be eventually Jerusalem. And there was what's called the King's Valley, a valley that was close by Salem, because Jerusalem's up on the ridge. And he's coming by in the valley. And Melhisadek, the king of Salem, and also the priest, he's both king and priest. He hears that Abram has conquered those four kings, that the five kings of Canaan couldn't conquer, that he's coming back victorious, and he's excited. And so he comes down to greet Abram and to bring an offering, a sacrifice of bread and wine. And as I said, this king, Melhisadek, Melhisadek, the name means king of righteousness, is the one who worships still. He still worships that one true God, the Most High, the Creator of heaven and earth. And so he comes down to greet Abram and to offer that sacrifice of bread and wine. Sounds to me like a type or a foreshadow, and it is. So Melhisadek, king of righteousness, both king and priest, foreshadows Christ, who will bring bread, offer bread and wine in order to nourish that sacrifice of, a perfect sacrifice, which will be extended through bread and wine. And it's interesting that when the two meet, it's actually Abram's descendant that will become that priest and that king, the Messiah, the promised Messiah. So Melhisadek, his foreshadowing will be fulfilled in Abram's descendant. Now, it's interesting that a king's portion in a war, the spoils, 10% would automatically belong to the king. So what does Abram do? He gives 10% of all his spoils to the king. So again, an indication, a confirmation that Abram's living in the territory of King of Salem, of Melhisadek. And he acknowledges him as king and offers to him that 10%. Then he returns everything to the other kings. He takes nothing for himself. Nothing for himself. Again, a confirmation to his authenticity, his generosity, and the strength of his character. Again, God is pleased. So God is pleased with his actions, his faith. And immediately after that, after he has acknowledged the king and given everything back, God appears to him in a vision. And that vision is described for us in chapter 15, verses 1 to 6. And so please read along with me. "After these things, the word of the Lord came to Abram in a vision. Fear not, Abram; I am your shield. Your reward shall be great. But Abram said, 'O Lord God, what will you give me? For I continue childless, and the heir of my house is Eliezer of Damascus.'" So who was Eliezer? Eliezer was his slave. So kind of the house steward is the closest number-one slave in his household. So the plan was that if he passes away, he will simply leave everything to the slave Eliezer. He'll make him his heir. Okay? So he'll make Eliezer his heir. "And Abram said, 'Behold, you have given me no offspring, and a slave born in my house will become my heir.' And behold, the word of the Lord came to him. This man shall not be your heir; your own son shall be your heir.'" And I find this next passage amazing. "And he brought him outside and said, 'Look towards heaven and number the stars. If you are able to number them...'" Then he said to him, "'So shall your descendants be.'" And Abram believed in the Lord, and he, God, reckoned it to him as righteousness. So, you know, our first impression is that this happened at night, that God spoke to Abram at night, then called him out of the tent and said, "Look at all the stars. Can you count them? If you can count them, that's how many descendants you're going to have." But it didn't happen at night. It happened in broad daylight. Because when you read further on in verse 13, the sun doesn't go down until much, much later on, when the covenant is made. So this is happening in broad daylight. Abram experienced this vision, and he says, "Look up. Do you see the stars? Well, no, you can't." But Abram knows by faith that they're out there because he can see them at night. They're there, but he just simply can't see them. By faith, he knows they're there. And so God is saying, in the same way, by faith, "Trust me. You don't see your descendants yet, but you, your descendants will be... If you can count all the stars, that'll be the number of your descendants." And Abram is moved, makes an act of deep faith and trust. And that's counted as righteousness, as holiness in the eyes of the Lord. And then immediately after that, God's going to use an ancient rite that was practiced at that time to establish a covenant. And so, you know, what is a covenant? A covenant is not a contract. A covenant is a surrender of one's life to the other. So God promises to be the God of Abraham, and Abraham promises to worship and acknowledge God. Okay? So it's a gift. God becomes a gift in the covenant to Abraham. And Abraham, in this covenant, will gift his life to God. And so this is how the covenant took place. So verses 7 in chapter 15. "And he said to Abram, 'I am the Lord who brought you from Ur of the Caldeans to give you this land to possess.' But he said, 'O Lord God, how am I to know that I shall possess it?'" And then God said to him, "Bring me a heifer, three years old; a she-goat, three years old; a ram, three years old; a turtle dove, and a pigeon dove.'" So five different animals. "And he brought him all these, cut them in two, and laid each half over against the other; but he did not cut the birds in two. And when birds of prey came down upon the carcasses, Abram drove them away." So this kind of needs a little bit of explanation, how this covenant would be made. It would be made on a hill, on an incline. Okay? And you would maybe even possibly cut out a little bit of a kind of, how do you say? Like a trough coming down, a runoff, right? Yeah, like a ditch kind of running down. And so you would sacrifice the animals, and you would cut them in half, starting with the heifer, the two sides. And then the next animal, two sides. And then the next animal, two sides. And then you would just sacrifice the birds, but not cut them in half. So you're kind of downhill. So what are you getting? You're getting a pool of blood flowing, trickling in between, down the middle. Okay? And then once you have this blood trickling down, you establish what the covenant is going to be. And then the one party walks down through that stream of blood. Okay? And then the next party, the next person who's entering in the covenant will walk through that stream of blood. And the whole idea is, "I solemnly swear to fulfill the agreement of our covenant. And if I break it, then let this happen to me, what's happened to these animals." Okay? So these animals have lost my life. Then may I die. So it's sort of, "May death be my punishment if I break the covenant agreement." So the day goes on, and it starts getting dark. The sun goes down. He actually falls asleep, and then he wakes up, and it's dark. And he's overcome by fear. So why is he overcome by fear? Because he realizes that I'm entering into a covenant agreement with God. God never breaks a covenant. And how am I gonna keep my covenant? How am I gonna keep the covenant? I won't be able to fulfill it. So he's overcome with this fear because he knows that eventually he's going to fail, and the consequence is death. And something beautiful then happens. What he sees is a vision, a vision of a flaming torch. Two things. It's a fire pot, so it's a pot with ashes, a fire pot that you would start fires with, and a flaming torch. And the fire pot and the flaming torch come in between the two cut animals and pass through that stream of blood. And what the message is, is God saying, "I know you can't keep the covenant. I will keep it for you." And so God walks through on behalf of himself and on behalf of Abraham. So if you break the covenant, I will take the punishment. Wow. So after that, everything is good. Abram's happy. You know, God has confirmed the covenant. He's gonna come through with his promises. But years start to pass, and nothing seems to happen. And Sarai starts to become impatient. "And we've gotta do something. God's not doing anything. We've gotta do something. Maybe he's waiting for us to do something." When God established that covenant, it was like, "Abram, you don't have to do anything. All you have to do is wait, trust in me, have faith. I'll do the rest." So nothing else was expected from Abram. Simple of faith, the obedience of faith, simple trust. Wait upon the Lord. But here, all of a sudden, they're being tempted. We know, maybe God's waiting. We gotta do something. So Sarai comes up with the idea, says, "I have a slave girl, Hagar. And so why don't you enter into her and conceive? And the offspring she will bear will legally become ours. And that'll be our offspring, our descendant." And so Abram agrees. He takes Sarai's slave girl, Hagar, and she conceives. And we see here that the covenant is broken because God did not ask Abram to do anything, but just simply... Abram to do anything, but just simply to patiently wait. And so, in essence, the covenant here is broken, but God will renew the covenant. So once Hagar conceives, she's a little bit persecuted by Sarai, and so she runs away out of fear of being punished for looking down upon her mistress. And so actually, it's, Hagar was giving Sarai a hard time, Sarai, and so she's afraid of being reprimanded, and so she runs away. And then through an angel, an angel of God, who appears to Hagar, says that, "I will also make a multitude of descendants from you, from your offspring. So go back home to your mistress and be obedient to her." So Hagar returns to Abram's household. She bears a son called Ishmael, which mean, means God has heard. So by this time, Abram is eighty-six at the birth of Ishmael. So according to that numbering, so he's either eighty-six or forty-three. Take whatever you want. And and now thirteen years pass after that event. And God appears again and, and in order to renew the covenant. So the covenant was kind of broken by the fact that they did kind of act again without God's direction. And so God appears now to renew the covenant again. And so this is described in chapter seventeen, verses one to twenty-two. And so God appears, reestablishes the covenant with Abram and his descendants, again renews the promises, a multitude of descendants. But now, God promises to make two nations out of him, through Ishmael, and then also through another descendant that will be born to Sarai, the promise of land and blessing. And so God changes Abram's name. So Abram meant exalted father. Now his name is changed to Abraham, which means father, father of many. And Sarai becomes Sarai, which means princess of many nations. So you see how God kind of works through crooked lines. He kind of works even through our mistakes in order to fulfill his will. But now, there's going to be a little bit more expected of Abraham. So the covenant is sealed by circumcision. And from that point on, every male is to be circumcised on the eighth day. And the circumcision then will become an external sign of membership in that covenant community and that covenant with God. Chapter eighteen, the appearance of, of three men at the oaks of Mamre near Hebron. So let's just read through that because I think it's, it's a beautiful passage. So eighteen, follow along with me, one to fifteen. "And the Lord appeared to him, Abraham, by the oaks of Mamre, as he sat at the door of his tent in the heat of the day. He lifted up his eyes and looked, and behold, three men stood in front of him. When he saw them, he ran from the tent door to meet them and bowed himself to the earth and said, 'My lord, if I have found favor in your sight, do not pass by your servant. Let a little water be brought and wash your feet, and rest yourselves under the tree, while I fetch a morsel of bread, that you may refresh yourselves, and after that you may pass on, since you have come to your servant.'" So they said, "Do as you have said." So who are these three men? This is interesting. He recognizes one. He only refers to one of the three as lord. So he recognizes the presence of God. Whether he recognizes the voice, this is the same voice that spoke to me in Haran. This is the same voice that speaks to me in all these visions. He recognizes the presence of the Lord, who appears here as a man. And the other two are simply angels, again appearing as human beings. So it's the Lord. So it's not the three persons of the Trinity here appearing. It's the Lord appearing with two angels, two of his angels. And the Lord, who is it? Who is it that is appearing to him as a man? Take a guess. It's most, it's, it's God the Son, the second person of the Holy Trinity, who will one day become incarnate of the Virgin Mary and truly become a man. Okay? So let's read on. Verse six. "And Abram hastened into the tent to Sarai and said, 'Make ready quick three measures of fine meal; knead it and make cakes.' And Abraham ran to the herd and took a calf, tender and good, and gave it to the servant, who hastened to prepare it. Then he took curds and milk and the calf, which he had prepared, and set it before them, and stood by them under the tree while they ate. They said to him, 'Where is Sarai, your wife?' And he said, 'She is in the tent.' And the Lord said, 'I will surely return to you in the spring, and Sarai, your wife, shall have a son.'" So Sarai's inside the tent. She's kind of listening to a conversation, and she's kind of laughing to herself. "And Sarai was listening at the tent door behind him. Now Abraham and Sarai were old, advanced in age. It had ceased to be with Sarai after the manner of woman." So she's already in her fifties or sixties, right? And so Sarai laughed to herself, saying, "After I have grown old and my husband is old, shall I have pleasure?" And the Lord said to Abram, "Why did Sarai laugh?" Because he knows everything, right? And says, "And say, 'Shall I indeed bear a child now that I am old? Is anything too hard for the Lord? At the appointed time, I will return to you in the spring, and Sarai shall have a son.'" But Sarai denied, saying, "I did not laugh, for she was afraid." He said, "No, but you did laugh." And it's kind of, you see the irony here later, and kind of the humor a little bit, because later on, when Sarai does bear a son, Isaac, Isaac has also been interpreted to mean God laughs last. He has the last laugh. Okay. So what happens next after that? The three men get up and actually set out towards Sodom. And Abram kind of, it goes with them on their way, to kind of set them on their way. And the Lord begins to speak, and he says, "Shall I hide from Abraham what about to do? And seeing that Abraham shall become a great and mighty nation, and all the nations of the earth shall be blessed themselves by them, he decides that he will reveal what is he going to do." The iniquity in Sodom of Gomorrah has reached the limit. So God is very patient. He's waited for a long time, but it's just enough is enough. There's no repentance, there's no change, and the time for justice has come. And so Abraham, Abraham asks, and he says, "He says, 'Lord, if there's fifty people, fifty righteous people, fifty good people left, will you destroy the city?'" "No." And he said, "Well, what about forty? Will you destroy it?" "No." "Well, what about twenty?" "No." "Well, if you find ten good people in those cities, will you destroy it?" And the Lord says, "No, I will not." And so we see how merciful the Lord is. But if people refuse to approach his mercy and ask for forgiveness and to repent, they have to face his ju- judge, justice. The limit of iniquity has been reached, and now those two cities will face God's justice. The sexual perversity and immorality, the acts of homosexuality that have been taking place in these places places are just, have become an abomination to the Lord. So if you note that the Lord disappears, and it's only the two angels that continue to fulfill the will of God, the destruction of Sodom and Gomorrah. So only the two angels come to Sodom, and they arrive in the evening. Now Lot was sitting at the gate of the city. And I guess he's sitting there waiting, maybe there's a guest or somebody coming. And again, this is sense of hospitality, of seeing a stranger, welcoming them to, to his home. And so he greets them, and he, he welcomes them to come into their home. He prepares a feast for them, and the unwritten rule of the Oriental rule of hospitality is that you're responsible for your guests. You have to provide food, shelter, and protection for your guests, even if it costs you your life. So this very deep unwritten rule of, of hospitality. And so what happens is that the people find out, the men outside find out that that there's two guests, two men who've come to visit, and they're staying with Lot. And they come banging on the door and says, "Bring them out, those two men, because they want to sodomize them. Bring them out." And Lot says, "No, I can't. They're my guests. I'll sooner give you my own daughters than I will give you these guests. But please do not do anything to them." And they start pushing Lot against the door because he's come outside, and they press against the door, and they're going to, to break down the door when the two angels inside open the door, pull Lot in, and all of a sudden, there's a flash, and all the men, the people outside immediately become blinded. And then the angels say to Lot and his family, "Leave this place. Leave this place immediately. If you have daughters or family, pack everything and get out of here because this, this city will be destroyed." And the future son-in-laws of Lot's daughter think it's a joke, so they don't believe it. And actually, Lot takes his time because again, it's, it's early morning, it's just starting to get to dawn. And the angels again kind of tell him, you know, you better, you better start getting, you, you better start going. Okay? And Lot's, Lot's not exactly in a hurry. And so what the scriptures say is that the angels, those two men, they literally took his daughters by the hand, and Lot and his wife, and dragged them out of town, outside the gate, and says, "Go, because this city will be destroyed. And don't look back." And so Lot and his wife and his daughters, they run to the nearest city, which is out of the valley, to Zohar, which is west. And the sun already has, has risen. And as soon as they reach the gates of Zohar, as soon as they reach the giddy of Zohar, hail and brimstone falls down from heaven and destroys the two cities of Sodom of Gomorrah. Complete destruction. And unfortunately, Lot's wife looks back, and she is destroyed. It's described as turning, turning into a pillar of salt because she looked back. So we can see the intensity of, of the blast, or whatever it was that took place, that it actually causes death to Lot's wife who looks back. Let's look now at chapter twenty-one, verses one to seven. And we're close to the end. Twenty-one, one to seven. "The Lord visited Sarai, as he said," so it was in the springtime, "and the Lord did to Sarai as he promised. And Sarai conceived and bore Abraham a son in his old age, at a time of which God had spoken to him. Abraham called the name of his son, who was born to him, whom Sarai bore him, Isaac. And Abraham circumcised his son Isaac when he was eight days old, as God had commanded him. Abraham was a hundred years old when his son Isaac was born to him." So according to the measurement here, twenty-five years. Remember, say it was seventy-five years when God first spoke to him in Haran. It's twenty-five years have passed. Or if you want to look at half of that time, but it was anyways, it's a significant amount of time before God fulfills the promise. "And Sarai said, 'God has made laughter for me. Everyone who hears will laugh over me.'" And so the name again, God has the last laugh. Sarai bears a son finally, in her old age. So as the child grew and was weaned, one day, the son of Hagar, Ishmael, so Abraham's first son, Ishmael, is playing with, with Isaac. And Sarai's looking on, and she's saying, "Hmm, there's going to be problems here between the two sons as to who is going to be the firstborn and who's going to inherit everything." And she says to Abraham, "You know what? You have to send Hagar and Ishmael away so that there's no conflict, so that Isaac will become the rightful heir." And at first, he doesn't want to do it. But God speaks to him and says, "Do as Sarai says." And so he does. He prepares a bag of water, a wine, a skin of water, and some bread, and he sends Hagar and Ishmael away. They wander kind of through the desert, and the bread, the bread is gone, the water is gone, and she's preparing to die. And so she leaves her son under one of the bushes and then walks away. She doesn't want to watch her son die, so she, it says, "The distance of an arrow shot." She goes away and, and just kind of, I just don't want to watch my son die. In the meantime, the child cries out in prayer, cries out to the Lord, and the Lord heard him. Interesting. His name is, God hears. The Lord has heard. And so God then speaks to, to Hagar and says, "I've heard the prayer of your child. I've heard his cry. And do not be afraid. I will preserve you and make a great nation out from you, from your child, through your descendant, through your child, your son, Ishmael." And she kind of then turns around, and there is a well of water. And so they survive and then continue to live in the wilderness of Paran. Ishmael becomes an experienced hunter, and eventually Hagar finds him a wife from Egypt. Now we come to the conclusion, to the final test. As I mentioned in the beginning, this is what will bring Abraham's faith to fulfillment, to perfection. And it's described in chapter twenty-two. And so here comes the test, the final test of faith, obedience and surrender. "After these things, God tested Abraham, and he said to him, 'Abraham.'" And he said, "Here am I." What a beautiful answer. "Here I am. I'm here to serve. What is it that you want, Lord?" And you'll see that later on. You'll see that with the prophet Samuel, who's raised at the, at the temple from a young child. God will speak to him and says, "Here I am, ready to serve." And so Abraham is ready to serve, to listen, to obey whatever God commands. "And he said, 'Take your son, your only son Isaac, whom you love, and go to the land of Moriah and offer him there as a burnt offering upon one of the mountains, which I shall tell you.'" "So take what you love the most in life and show that you love me more by sacrificing it. Do you love me more than even your son, Isaac?" Now, the command makes no sense at all. It actually, it makes no sense at all because here, God promised a descendant. He waited such a long time for the birth of this son. And now he wants Abraham to sacrifice this descendant? Isn't this putting the whole plan into jeopardy? Doesn't this mean that if, if he sacrifices Isaac, well, that's it? There's, there's not much time left to have another son. This is it. And, and what about the whole promise of descendants and a nation, and all the nations being blessed and land, and all that kind of thing? But Abram, look at Abram. He doesn't need an explanation. He doesn't need to understand. You know, very often, we want to know, we want to understand. Well, I'm not going to obey, or I'm not going to listen till I understand why. But he doesn't demand any explanation. He trusts that, well, God, he has a reason. And, and I think more deeply here is that Abram's faith is so deep. He believes that even though he may sacrifice his son Isaac, God will raise him up from the dead. God will raise him up from the dead. So he's going to do this believing that God will raise his son from the dead. Verse 3. "So Abraham rose early in the morning, saddled his ass, and took two of his young men with him and his son, Isaac. And he cut the wood for the burnt offering, and arose and went to the place of which God had told him." So he actually went north along that ridge. And it's believed that Mount Moriah is where Jerusalem is today. So later on in Scriptures, Mount Moriah is identified as the place where the Temple Mount is, where the temple will eventually stand. And eventually, not too far from the Temple Mount, where Jesus, the Son of God, the promised Messiah, will be offered as a sacrifice. "So on the third day, Abraham lifted up his eyes and saw the place afar off. So God showed him exactly where the sacrifice was to take place. Then Abraham said to his young men, 'Stay here with the ass, and I with the lad will go yonder and worship and come again to you.' And Abraham took the wood of the burnt offering and laid it on Isaac, his son. And he took in his hand the fire and the knife." So just take a moment to look at this picture. Abraham's walking up the mountain. He's got a knife in his hand. He's got a pot of fire, so ashes from which he's going to start a fire. And who is carrying the wood? Isaac. You have here a foreshadowing. You have here an image that points to the Most Holy Trinity. Abraham, Abram, exalted father, originally his name, represents who? Symbolizes God the Father. The son, Isaac, is carrying wood. He symbolizes Jesus, who will carry wood, the cross. And the Holy Spirit is represented by the fire pot, which the Father carries, the fire. So here you have this image of the Trinity and that moment of salvation when Jesus, God the Father, will sacrifice his only son for the salvation of the world and the human race. So they went up both together. "And Isaac said to his father, Abraham, 'My father.' And he said, 'Here am I, son.' He said, 'Behold, fire in the wood. But where is the lamb for the burnt offering?' Abraham said, 'God will provide Himself, the lamb for the burnt offering, my son.' So they went both of them together. When they came to the place of which God had told him, Abraham built an altar there and laid the wood in order and bound Isaac, his son, and laid him on the altar upon the wood.'" There's no struggle. Isaac, simply out of obedience, does everything his father says, just like Jesus, out of obedience, will willingly place himself upon that cross. "Then Abraham put forth his hand and took his knife to slay his son. But the angel of the Lord called to him from heaven and said, 'Abraham, Abraham.' And he said, 'Here am I.' He said, 'Do not lay your hand on the lad or do anything to him, for I know now that you fear God, seeing you have not withheld your son, your only son, from me.' And Abraham lifted up his eyes and looked, and behold, behind him was a ram caught in the thickets by his horns. And Abraham went and took the ram and offered it up as a burnt offering instead of his son. So Abraham called the name of that place; the Lord will provide, as it is said to this day, on the mount of the Lord it shall be provided.'" So God is so much pleased again by Abraham's love and his deep faith, his total surrender and total trust. He trusts the Lord completely. He needs no explanations. He has no doubts of the goodness of God. He knows God will provide, even if necessary, to raise his son from the dead. And the Lord, God, will provide. God Himself, the Father, will not spare his beloved son but offer him as a sacrifice, a perfect sacrifice on the cross. And then He will raise his son so that we may share in that sacrifice and share the gift of resurrection and eternal life. I'd like to conclude with just one final comment is that, again, that this final image of this sacrifice here points to the fact that all nations of the world will be blessed by Abraham's seed. As St. Paul has said, "One specific seed, the promised Messiah, Jesus, our Lord and King, who will become both the priest, the king of righteousness, the priest who offers a perfect sacrifice, and at the same time, the victim itself, the lamb, the lamb of God, who is sacrificed for the sin of the world." That concludes our Bible study for this evening. Once again, if you wish, please go back and reread chapters 12 to 22. There's lots there and many, many beautiful faith lessons. And then in preparation for session 7, we will continue with the patriarchs, specifically Isaac and Rebecca, and then their two sons, Esau and Jacob. So that's chapters 23 to 36. Let's end with prayer. "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth, as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for yours is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, now and forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son,